Terry Mills, we approve. Jeff seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve the financial? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Construction sureties, item D, August 19.
Just again, in your packet as a courtesy. City's still trying to get bids or get that third quote for the Maple Tree Drainage Project. They've got two quotes and they're trying to get a third. Like to get that project done. And then again, on the Center Estates Phase Two over there, Metcalf, that pipe's laying on the ground. Been laying there for a year. They're mowing around it, but we still don't have that project going. Again, they're trying to get the contractor that the city's gonna use out there to get that drainage project finished too. So, like to get both of those done this year if we can, but we're depending on the city. They've agreed to do those for us and we're just waiting on them to get out there and complete the projects.
Questions?
There's no action needed on that.
Item A, subdivision approvals. William McCannley, subdivision Track 11.186 acres, zero Chanuk Bridge Road.
Yeah, all seven plats are in your packet, should be stapled in order. Let me know if you don't have the right plat in front of you. First one you heard is 11.16 acre track that's being split into three tracks, a 3.043, 3.044, and 5.099. They're all zoned AR1 as agriculture, as we know. Tech review reviewed them. They all meet our requirements, are in compliance, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. This is a Vantage Engineering plat. Kendall's here too, if you have any questions. Cutting 11 acre track into three agricultural tracks.
Terry Mills, we approve. Jeff seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Steve, I notice there's no signatures on the copy.
Those were preliminary copies that came in at tech review. What we're doing is we're getting big versions and small versions. And the big versions typically have signatures. Some of them don't, just go through tech review. But the 11 by 17s are typically looser. This one actually had some signatures, the next one's got some signatures on it.
Yeah, I just noticed the first one didn't.
Yeah. The applications are signed when we get them in. We make sure of that, for sure.
Motion been made in second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Number two, Irvin Worthington Jr., Gary Worthington, subdivision Track 1.081 acres, 300 Worthington Road, Parksville.
Yeah. If you guys drove out there, you'll see it's at the corner of Worthington Road and then the road is called Wagon Road, although it's not really a county road, just for a short piece right away. It's, well, it shows it on there, but it's kind of just an old named road with no defined right of way. Again, we're just cutting off a 1.01 acre track off an existing farm. The bigger farm is there to the western part of that site. And again, this meets all our requirements for the tech review. And again, that plat was turned in and reviewed in preliminary fashion, and I believe all the corrected plats are in on some of those now.
Motion to approve. Jeff Mills, we approve. Wendy seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Number three, McCannley Nelson Design Construction LLC, subdivision Track 21.14 acres, 302 Kemper Lane.
This plat should look familiar. We just did it, you can see the date on the sign that says 8-5, but we just looked at this plat just a month or two ago on Kemper and Goggan. What's happened since then, they've revised some acreages slightly. And what Kendall's done on that drawing, you can see he's crossed out lots A, C, and D and put the new revised acreage. So again, after this thing was platted and we were moving the pieces around, the potential owners wanted to swap some lot lines a little further. The plat's in the same general configuration as you all saw it prior. We're just revising the acreage of lots A, C, and D. So it's fairly minor as far as the review we looked at. And again, Kendall's here, if you guys have any questions of him. Again, but the number of lots are recreated and how they're laid out are basically consistent with what you guys just approved a short while ago. Kendall, anything you need to add on that?
Technically correct, Steve.
Technically correct.
Thank you.
Second time around.
Jeff Mills, we approve. Suzie seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item four, Margaret Ellis, subdivision Track 35.579 acres, zero Crawford Hollow Road.
All right, Ellis property on Crawford Hollow. If you haven't gone out there, it's a fun drive. This is basically just coming off the existing farm. You guys can see all the references on the plat. Not much we needed to review, not many comments we had except on the remaining piece of the existing farm. This is AGE plat. Dale's here, if you guys have any questions to Dale. But again, meets all the requirements of subdivision regulations and technical review is recommended approval of this body.
Suzie Mills, we approve. Jeff seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Number five, Bruce and Beth Robbins, subdivision Track 2.637 acres, zero Tarlick Road.
All right, again, property on Tarlick Road. We're cutting off a 2.637 acre track from the Robbins property to the north, and it's being conveyed, as you can see, to the property to the south. And again, it's kind of a classic, we're cutting off that track A that you see in red. It can't stand there by itself, it'd be a standalone non-conforming track, but it's being added to a track to the south, and you can see that by way of the dash line. So again, we're just cutting off that track and adding it to the piece, to the farm to the south. Again, meets all our requirements.
Terry Mills, we approve. Vent seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Number six, Zachary and Julie Shelton, subdivision Track 1.603 acres, 460 Upper Salt River Road.
All right, I think purpose statement says it pretty well. Purpose of the plat is to subdivide 1.63, or 0.3 acres from the Zachary property, leaving 8.383 acres as Track B. You can see that pretty clearly. AGE did this plat, and you can see some other things they surveyed on there as far as creeks and tree lines and some other stuff. So, buildings, et cetera, easements. So again, the plat meets all our requirements. Dale's here. Oh, I'm sorry, this is Steve Carroll plat, sorry. This is Mr. Carroll's plat. I'll let Dale answer. Well, this is how they work in technical review, by the way. They all chime in on all the plats. Yeah, Mr. Carroll's here, if you have any questions for him. Again, meets all our requirements for a subdivision plat. And that's one you just brought in, corrected today, this morning, right?
Terry Mills, we approve. Suzie seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. And item seven, AD Hammond Estate, subdivision Track 2.623 acres, zero Kentucky Highway 52.
So that S is plat? This one did generate a tad bit of debate just because of its uniqueness at tech review. You can see it's a parcel 2.623 acres on the north side of Highway 52. Nancy has titled this as a retracement survey. It technically is a retracement. The property exists, it's in ownership, but it was never recorded. So what we're doing with this plat is basically getting it to the courthouse for the first time in this configuration. All the references are correct. But again, it is in a property estate, I believe. Is that right, Nancy?
Yes.
It's in an estate, and they need to clean up some, the way this thing kind of gets moved and conveyed. And that's the property, and that's the way it looks on the north side of the highway. The PVA's got some other stuff happening on their website, but this gets the plat correct and recorded for the first time. And again, it's titled a retracement, but technically it's the first recording of this configuration. Nancy's here, if you got any questions for her, if anything she might want to add. Anything, Nancy, you want to add on that?
Suzie Mills, we approve. Vent seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Next item on the agenda is item F. We're gonna skip that agenda and save it for another date. No, just kidding. We're gonna go ahead and do new business and come back and do that as the last item.
Do the new business? Okay.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and go to new business. Advisory Committee report.
Advisory Committee, there goes all the surveyors cutting out. So, sunny day, they gotta get outside. The Advisory Committee did meet, and I'll touch on that when we get to the zoning ordinance, but the Advisory Committee met on August 16th, on Friday. The Advisory Committee's sole purpose there was to review the text amendment of the zoning ordinance, since we sort of made some more tweaks to it since the last meeting. Additionally, we talked about how the packets would go out and how the zoning ordinance would go out to you guys and what form or fashion to show the changes that happened from the July meeting. So really, what we talked about is how the cover would be worded, and we also talked about the legal review we had prior to that with the city, the county, and our attorneys. And again, Advisory Committee met, not much more to report on, and they green-lighted that the texts go out in this full configuration this third time with that new cover on it. Jerry, anything else? I don't think there's, we met on Friday briefly, the 16th.
Any questions about Advisory Committee report? Item two, Personnel Committee report, we don't have anything there. Budget Committee report, we're, nothing there. Any other new business, intern agreement amendment?
Yeah, the three new business items. You know, we have an intern agreement, and we've had an intern all summer, May 15 to August 15. She's back at EKU for the fall. We really appreciated her help, and she's been a big help in the office. She's currently looking for a job, and she's close to landing the job. And if it's okay with you guys, we'd like to use her on Fridays, at least through Labor Day, maybe a couple weeks longer. She only has classes on Monday through Thursday, and she's willing to come in and work on Fridays for the next couple weeks, which would be helpful for us while we're still in this construction season. It's in the budget, it shouldn't be any budget issue, but she'll probably just work a couple more weeks if you guys are okay with that. So really, what this is, is just extending that agreement a couple more Fridays until she gets her job landed there at EKU. We talked about bringing her back at Christmas, or next spring, but I think the spring is, you know, if we kind of play to the same style, using her over the summer's been real helpful. Just coming in, answering the phone, and doing some small stuff, running some errands. She went up and picked up signs. Lisa did some, I did some. We picked up 40, 50 signs last week of now hiring, and we paint hot tubs. I don't know what the heck half those signs said, but we picked up 50-some signs last week. They're back by the dumpster in our impound area for 30 days. But she's done some of that for us too, so it's been real helpful. And hopefully, she's enjoyed the experience. If it's okay with you guys, we'd like to extend that just a couple more weeks.
Yeah, let's do it.
It's wherever you guys prefer.
Jeff Mills, we extend the intern agreement for a few weeks. And Suzie seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to extend the intern agreement? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Next item under new business, the Smart Growth Conference update?
Just quickly, it was on there, just so you guys could see. The agenda was in your packet, the draft agenda at this point in time, it's moving forward. There's not much I need to comment on, just to give you guys an idea of where the agenda's going. After we had the discussion, at this point, the Smart Growth Committee has put out a hold the date, some kind of flyer going out to some different groups of citizens. But this is the draft agenda at this point in time, and it's still gonna evolve a tad bit. But the date's firm, the agenda's shaping up with the speakers and the style, and again, not much more I can answer, but if there's anything you guys want me to convey back to the Smart Growth Committee, I'd be glad to do that. But I think it's looking good, and I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop on where we're going with that one-day conference.
Moving on, FY '20 work plan?
Again, each year since I've been here, I've been putting the work plan forward to you guys, and the first one had 19 items. As you know, we accomplished most of those in year one. Year two had 11 or 12, I forget. This one only has seven, because I think we're knocking everything out that we intended to do, zoning ordinance being a big chunk of that. But you can see for next year, it seems kind of light. We've got the ongoing construction projects we want to close out. On the GIS map is continuing. We obviously gotta get the zoning ordinance, if we could ever get it through and finish. It needs to go out to the governments. Subdivision regs, yep.
I'm not seeing that in our target.
That's not in there? Should be the very last page. Should be the last page. You guys missing it in a couple?
Got it.
So, I was getting ready to blame the intern on that one.
Too many papers.
So again, no big items there. I think the biggest item that's on that, and that's why the list is smaller, is we want to get into the future land use map for Danville. We've done Parribles, we've done Junction Cities. We want to get into our community, the Danville Future Land Use Map, and that'd be a huge project. Additionally, we need to get a zoning ordinance built for Junction City. So if we can get the zoning ordinance moving forward for the other three communities, the goal here is we'd come back with another zoning ordinance that would be just Junction Cities and get that, but we also have to build a zoning map back for them. Interestingly enough, there's several things happening down in Junction City and our void of zoning regulations. There's trees going down, dirt being moved, right now as we speak today, because there's a void in zoning rules, right now. And so, we're anxious to get a zoning ordinance back on the books down there now that they're back in the fold. Subdivision regs are back in play, comp plans approved, future land use map's done. We need to get a zoning ordinance. So I would think between the items five and six, that's gonna take up a good chunk of the year, so that's why the plan is fairly light. That's just to give you guys an update of what kind of my to-do list is, the big-ticket items on top of all the day-to-day stuff. And again, we'll amend that as the year goes on. That's just more an information item. And that's all I had for new business.
Questions for Steve on that? Work plan for 2020? Hearing none, any other new business?
No, sir.
No other new business. We'll go back to item F, public hearings. This was tabled on lastly, 6/26/19, Danville County Planning and Zoning Commission, application to man articles four, five, and seven of the joint zoning ordinance. In order to discuss that, we need a motion to take that off the table and bring it to the floor. Suzie Mills, we do take it off the table, move it to the floor. Terry seconds. Question, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we are now in a public hearing with regarding to this item. And I'd like to begin, Steve, with you reporting. And after that, we may call on Henry to share some thoughts also and where we are.
All right, so again, one of the items Advisory Committee met was on that cover right there. Again, to redate it to this date, because what has happened since the last meeting, there's been some housekeeping fixes. There have been discussions on the pipeline. And where we left the last meet, well, before we get there, let me just, there's other folks here. As you all know, one of the reasons we, is the mic's not working?
It don't sound like it either.
Check, check.
There you go. Get it closer to you.
So, as you know, one of the reasons we even took this project on started with the Supreme Court Directive on the sign ordinance. We've gone through that, Henry gave you synopsis of that. We had to fix the sign ordinance, and when we did, we decided we were gonna get into the zoning ordinance altogether. Another issue was our zoning ordinance, there's the NCC page that was adopted in '04. As you know, that's not even the rules for our community for NCC. They changed in 2011. The amendments that happened since 2004 were never codified. All we have is a scanned version of a document that was prepared outside of our office. And so, we've got amendments that were done since '04. We got zoning text that's not current. We got a document that doesn't flow well, and the whole goal was to get a document more organized, take the 18 articles, put them into seven, get a better flow for the ordinance. And as I mentioned, the first half wasn't that big a deal, one, three, and six, it's procedural. As we got into four, five, and seven, I think we all knew signs could be controversial, and of course, the pipeline verbiage, in the staff's opinion, needed some tweaks. And I think that's where we kind of ended up. At this point in time, I'm not aware that we've had any comments related to signage, landscape, parking, setbacks, zoning district names, the use chart in general. It's all been about the pipeline language as it pre-existed and the tweaks that the staff was proposing with the new draft, and that's kind of where we left it off. Additionally, after the last meeting, we talked about, there was a gentleman here that referenced a lot of stuff, used the words taking, and in a sense, was opposed to the staff proposal as it related to setbacks and other verbiage. So it was discussed that we'd have an attorney meeting, that our attorneys would kind of circle the wagons with the city and the county attorney, and we'd talk about some of those issues. And we did. We met, I think, on a Friday, I can't remember the date of that. Then after that, we met with Advisory Committee, and then after that, we reached out. We'd already reached out to Mr. Tom Fitzgerald, who's here in the back of the room with the Kentucky Resources Council about the changes, and he's seen drafts ones, two, and three, and has been commenting by way of email. But we really reached out in a more firm way after our attorney meeting and discussed what we were trying to do with the revisions, to basically change the style of the pipeline verbiage. And he's here today, and after I'm finished, I might just defer to him. He's written you guys a correspondence that's at your table, related to the staff proposal, and he's here today. So again, that's kind of where we left it. I won't get into all these sections of the ordinance, but I will point out some changes. So one of the things we did was, anything that we've changed from the first draft, we put in red in your draft. So just so you could see, because this thing has now been under a public hearing, it's been tabled for three months. You had a June draft, and anything that has changed from draft one to that draft is in red text. And so I've got every page up there, and it's hard to read, but everything that's in red is a change. Most of those we've talked about a month or two ago, but this way, you have a version at your desk that has every change we've made. Steve Griffin here found a couple more fixes we needed, and that's at your desk, is a three-page stapled document related to single-family, multifamily, and the agricultural signs. It's a reference to the sign section that was needed, has a good catch by Commissioner Griffin. That's at your desk. And then, of course, there's correspondence from Mr. Fitzgerald on some other minor changes to the staff proposal, or six changes to the pipeline text that is also at your desk for consideration. So there could be other things that come up, but where we stand today is that document with that date, the three-page document and the letter, that's kind of all the text where we're at in this point in time. And I'll quickly run through a couple things, because there were a couple things that happened since the last meeting, and one related to the solar panels. So, I think Commissioner Berry brought this up first. We talked about the solar panels and trying to do something in a residential setting on how we were gonna allow solar panels to exist or not exist. We've had a couple problems in the community that neighbors feel are intrusive. And we put some language in there related to the solar panels, and we got some blowback from the solar panel industry after the last meeting. So we went out and met with them and toured the facility here, and we wordsmithed page 4-13, 4-14, and it carries over to the other districts. And it really relates to that front roof solar panel issue. You know, are we gonna allow solar panels on the front of a building when they're applied to the roof? And what happens when the building faces south? We kind of had a prohibition about them being on the front of the home. The solar panel guys said, "Look, they need to go on the front when the house faces south." But we talked about the glare and light trespass and reflective problem. So we wordsmithed this to basically say, "We're gonna allow them, but we're not gonna allow any glare or reflectivity to trespass onto the neighbors." They said in that situation, they actually tint them differently and can angle them, because that can be a problem when you face one on the front of a house and the neighboring house across the road, depending on the stories. That panel can be very disruptive to that neighbor across the road. The other problem was in the backyard, they're doing some one-over-twos and one-over-threes, depending on what the client wants and how much juice they want to pull into the property. So we had to change number F to basically take the height requirement off and just sort of let that flow the way it needs to, parcel by parcel. With these two changes in the solar panel language on 4-13 and 4-14, they thought that was a workable solution, wouldn't impact their industry, and thought that's still respective in a neighborhood setting. So we carried that language through in the multifamily section too. So that's a fairly major change that you guys didn't see last month. And I'll go through these pretty quick. I won't spend much time on these, but I want to. So then on 4-24, same solar panel language. In the commercial section on 4-30, Henry made a fix related to the buffers between incompatible land uses, and announces the Director of the Planning and Zoning Commission may demand that uses which abut a different zone or which are authorized under a conditional use permit shall be buffered at the following rate. So he just changed on how we trigger that provision under two, A, B, C, and D on page Moving on past that, again, there was only about a dozen changes we made here. On page 4-46, on our consolidated shopping center sign language, Henry also made a change on the lettering of identification signs. I think he pointed that out at the last hearing, that we gotta be, again, under the Supreme Court Directive, we gotta be content neutral on these signs, so we can regulate heights and sizes and panels, but we gotta be careful about what we call these regulations, item by item. So he changed that item E that you see on page 4-30 to meet that Supreme Court Directive. With that, I believe that's everything in Article Four. And you get into Article Five, and we had no changes except, and I want to jump into This is Article Five, and you know now is a matrix of uses and a chart with Ps and Cs and blanks, all the uses now referencing one big chart. And at the last page of that chart, and it's hard to see for the folks in here because it's small up there, but the pipeline verbiage is up there, hazardous pipelines is in red. And it's pretty much the same, what changed since the last meeting, and I'll come back to these exhibits in a second, is after the legal crew met, and this gets to the page in your document that is 4-5, that's the chart, 5-45. 5-45. What we changed since the last meeting, and that's in the big, that's in the big document, we put this stuff back in the pipeline language. So as you remember, we had several bullets under how the pipeline standards would work with setbacks, plating, above-ground infrastructure, fencing, buffering, on and on. These two paragraphs were in the old language, and we put those back in. So after the Advisory Committee met and the legal guys met, we decided to put this language back in. Item one basically references the use chart and says that's where we allow the pipeline to be. We reference 5.1. Number two is all of the review criteria that was in the prior ordinance that the Board of Adjustments can consider a review and application on. So all of that went back in in number two. We left in our setback languages, three and four. So all those on the next page are in black because they didn't change, they were just renumbered, and we took out the stuff on the plating and a couple other minor things. So that's where we're at with the pipeline language. And then I want to back up before I hand it off to Mr. Fitzgerald. That's all the changes in the document. But I want to back up and show you guys something that sort of jumped all this off. So there's a map that our chairman asked about last month, and it wasn't on the screen, but it was handed out at the meeting. That's the map that shows the pipeline in Bull County. And this is a map, funny enough, I was handed, that shows it in the city. It's kind of hard to see. And this is a map that shows it going across the country or portion of it. And I thought was interesting, when I looked at this map, if you think about what we're doing, is we got a pipeline that runs the entire country, and we were attempting to do regulation in our county. So we were just taking a shot at one little portion of that pipeline with the hopes that, you know, we regulate what we can under our authority in our county, but yet the rest of that pipeline may have restrictions, may have not. Well, the approach in the zoning ordinance was very similar to that, if you think about it, because what we're trying to do, the prior process was a conditional use in all districts. There'd be a C in every one of those zoning districts across that chart. From day one, when I thought about this, I never really understood why we didn't just try to take smaller bites of the apple, make sure we get a conditional use somewhere that's appropriate. But clearly, there were districts that it's not appropriate to have a pipeline. And funny enough, way back when I was first hired and got introduced to all this, I was handed this document, which Mr. Fitzgerald authored, and in his document, we talked about this on the phone. He lays out four options on how he thought or suggested we could regulate the pipeline. One was through a conditional use across the whole thing. One was through zoning regulations, and there were a couple other options. And I literally made notes on this in October of 17, and my comment was, "Why not do a combined option? Why couldn't we do conditional and zoning and standards, the whole gamut of the tools in our toolkit for some degree?" And what's ironic about that is if you look at our use chart, it's very rare you find a use that we allow in every district, either by condition or a use that we allow in every district, either by condition or by right. It's just not normal. We don't put gas stations in neighborhoods. We don't put, you know, neighborhoods in industrial. So I thought it was odd to do the conditional use across every gamut of the zoning district, and he references this in his document, that the CUP was used because it's easily understandable and developers understand it. But I also think it insinuates something. When you open the book up, and I use this page right here under the old section, I want to show you this. This is a page, you can't read it from there, and I get it. But when you open the book up and you read what's permitted, and you're a developer, you're doing something, you go, "Hey, I can do that." And then when you see things that you can't do, you go, "Hey, I can't do that." But when you see things permitted by condition, I think the general understanding is, "Hey, that's a possibility. I might be able to do that. I got to go through the Board of Adjustments. There's other steps. There might be rules." I think conditional use are a good tool, but I think the perception is, "It's a possibility. I can do that unique thing in this district." And I go back to this map that I did, and you guys haven't seen this, but this is our zoning layer. With the blue line is the pipeline. It's hard to see across our county. And again, this isn't 100% accurate because we didn't have the meets and bounds description. But when you look at the center of Danville and you see that blue line, what struck me is, why would it be even suggested that we allow the pipeline in a residential zone, a public zone, a mobile park zone, a small lot residential? The CUP, to me, even though it was a good tool, I think a better way to approach this is just make it a straight prohibition. Now, if that's a problem with some other legal issue, then I guess we'll figure that out. But if you look at this map right here, this would be a conditional use. This would be permitted. This would be prohibited. This would be conditional. And as you look where this goes, down Baughman, by a school, in two neighborhoods, behind Krogers, behind Saddle Ridge, under the railroad track, into our industrial corridor, I don't see any other way, as a planner, and I'm not an attorney, and we talked about that, I don't see any other way to do this other than to use the tools we had, which is to permit it where you permit it, prohibit it where you prohibit it, conditional where it needs it, and put the rules behind it. Use every bit of that piece. So that's what this chart's doing, I think. And again, there was some folks that said, "Maybe that's not the best approach." But I think the beauty in that chart are where there's not a P or C on that chart. And I think this is also consistent with any other way we regulate uses in our book. So if we have the authority under zoning to regulate hazardous pipelines, then I'm comfortable saying, well, we pick and choose where we put uses every day, where they're allowed, where they're not allowed, and where they're conditional. And that's all we were attempting to do with that chart, is to make it possibly stricter. But at the end of the day, we don't, I don't think, if we don't have this use today and it's new, why would we ever even encourage that go in our GRA, GRB, mobile home park, public, schools, whatever? So that's kind of where the thought process was, and then the standards kind of moved on from there. But I think, you know, going back to looking at the maps, I think it made sense that this would be a better approach and a more consistent approach in the way we regulate uses across the whole zoning district. So with that, if it's okay with you guys, unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Fitzgerald, and he's written you guys some correspondence about the staff's proposal and kind of leave it, kind of go with him. There may be other folks that want to talk to you guys about this in general. But this is where we're at today, and whatever you guys do with the zoning ordinance is what you do. That's why you all get paid what you get paid there to make those decisions. The staff's put together a proposal, and we're glad to answer any questions you might have. If it's okay with our chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Fitzgerald.
Any questions for Steve?
Or are you suggesting maybe Henry wanted to?
I'm not, doesn't matter. Henry, do you want to go, Mr. Fitzgerald? It doesn't matter.
I think what I have to say might be a decent enough intro for Mr. Fitzgerald. And that's just that after the last meeting, we tabled this to talk about the legal support for this ordinance. We were concerned about whether takings or other constitutional problems might be a way to take it down. I've reviewed takings law. I met with the attorneys for the other government bodies who would have to adopt this and be in part responsible for its enforcement. And I can tell you that the same legal basis, which supports our current regulation on hazardous liquids pipelines, I feel that it supports the proposed ordinance. And that recommendation extends to Mr. Fitzgerald's proposed language. I have one tweak, perhaps he'll talk about that. But we are authorized by Kentucky statutes and by the Constitution to regulate land uses like this hazardous liquid pipeline concept. With regard to takings and preemption arguments, there's kind of a void of Kentucky opinions on the matter, and not to mention that what we have on the books and also what we're proposing are kind of vanguard ordinances. It's not something commonly adopted in the state or the country. But I think we have strong arguments under takings law that would support the ordinance. And I think the federal pipeline statutes, which deals with preemption, carves out a space for zoning to deal with the land use and siting aspects of the pipeline. So if the commission so pleases to pass the proposed ordinance this morning, I think they have legal footing to do so.
Thank you. Questions for Henry? This being a public hearing, anyone that would like to testify, please come to the mic, introduce yourself, name, address. Let us know who you are.
Chair Volkamp, Mr. Grant, can you introduce Mr. Fitzgerald?
Got it. We've got it, Dean. I can go ahead and do that. Good morning. As Chairman, members of the commission, I appreciate very much this opportunity to be here. I'm Tom Fitzgerald. I reside at 1600 Dundee Way in Louisville, Kentucky. And I've got to start by saying how much I appreciate both Henry's comments and Steve's comments. We had a very good conversation the other day. Just by way of background, I was asked by local government back in the day to work with Bruce Smith and with the Citizens Group and with the local government officials to craft the original ordinance that is on the books now that is being amended with Article Five. And the thought process at that time, we were dealing with a proposal that PHMSHA, which is the Federal Pipeline Hazardous Material Safety Administration, recognized as being significant enough to warrant a separate guidance document, and that was 70-plus-year-old pipeline that had been moving natural gas south to north was now, because of all of the excess of co-produced petroleum compounds and other hydrocarbons that are being produced in the Marcellus Shale up in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and West Virginia, they first didn't need the excess capacity anymore because the middle Atlantic states are now producing natural gas that's going north. And they had all of these co-produced natural gas liquids that they wanted to move south to the Gulf so they could then be stripped out into different fractions and sent mostly to the Pacific Rim because South America is awash with the stuff, as is North America. And so we were dealing with a 70-plus-year-old pipe that's in the ground, that goes through residential areas, that goes very close to schools, that is there already. And what we were trying to do was to craft a tool to capture the repurposing of these pipes into a much more dangerous product in terms of its explosive hazard, in terms of the effects of a catastrophic failure. And we were also just trying to, we really, as Henry said, this is the vanguard. You are the second community in the nation, okay, that has utilized what I believe are clearly authorized powers to reach out and say, "We are charged with assuring compatibility of uses one with another. We understand that safety is a concern that is preempted under the Department of Transportation laws, but compatibility is not." And you're talking about a land use that has the capacity of dramatically affecting other land uses. It's one of these things that's low-frequency, high-hazard, and high-impact occurrences. And as we saw in Lincoln County, sometimes very tragic occurrences. The, so we took the tools, crafted what we thought was a good approach. I think that Steve's suggestion of combining what was there with the idea of categorically excluding repurposing as well as new pipelines in certain districts is a good addition. It provides more certainty. Now, our thought process was never the fact that you have a conditional use permit leads to an assumption that it can be approved. It leads to the assumption that you have the opportunity to show that it's compatible. And that was a very steep, steep barrier, we thought. But providing more clarity and more certainty, I think, is a good addition, building on what was done at the time. There are, as you know, attorneys always have tweaks. Sometimes the tweaks are bigger. It's like the legislator that says, "I just have a little housekeeping bill." That's always when you wake up and you say, "Okay, we need to look at this thing backwards and forwards." But there are a couple of changes that I would suggest, just by way of clarification. And they are, I don't know that they materially change what is being proposed, but they do provide some additional clarity. The first is, I think the use table is a great addition, by the way, because it really provides everybody with a clear sense of what is permissible, what is not, in one coherent place, so you can look at it and not have to go through all of the text. My first recommendation is to clarify the section in the use table where it says hazardous pipelines, to be consistent with the text, so it would read hazardous liquid pipelines, parentheses, new or converted. So when you look at the use table, you're saying, "Okay, this applies clearly. I'm going to convert this. I am subject to this. I have the restrictions in these zones. I could go for a conditional use permit here and here, and I have an of right capacity in these two zones, heavy industrial and agricultural." So that's the first suggestion. The second, which is on page 5-45B2, no, B1, I'm sorry, reinstates an exemption that was in the existing ordinance, that simply provides that the hazardous liquid prohibitions and the hazardous liquid conditional use permits don't apply to piping that is within the boundaries of a manufacturing facility, that's internal to the pipeline, and it doesn't apply to a gas or a service station. It also says it doesn't apply to public facilities or public utility facilities. That last clause simply reflects what state law says, which is that it doesn't apply. But I wanted to put it in there just so if a public utility says, "Hey, we're running a new gas line," or "We're running a new oil line," or whatever, are we subject? They know that we understand and are respecting the restrictions of state law. So that's the second recommendation. The third is simply to strike, the language is in 5-45B2, where it begins, it says, "This is where the conditional use standards for those districts where it is available, these are the standards that would govern the Board of Adjustment." So they would say, "Okay, I've got to think about whether to issue a CUP or deny it. What are the criteria that I'm using to make that decision?" Well, here are the criteria. The applicant has to come forward and demonstrate compatibility. And it lays out what those, we want to know your proximity to wastewater and to water. We want to know your noise and odor issues. We want to know all of these different issues, so we, the Board of Adjustment, can determine, yes, with certain conditions, this could be compatible, or you simply haven't made your case. So what this would do is strike the phrase "if required," so that in all cases, the, when you're applying for a conditional use permit for a hazardous liquid pipeline, you'd have to meet these criteria and demonstrate compatibility. I can't imagine an instance where somebody would be asking for a CUP where you wouldn't want to know this information. That was why I was just suggesting you strike "if required." The fourth recommendation is simply to, and this is on 5-46, at the top of the page, there is the continuation of paragraph three and then paragraph four. What this does, the thousand-foot setback is a good default, okay? It's consistent with what I've seen in other recommendations, you know? Golden, Colorado is the other, the community that has a conditional use process, and theirs is just wide open. But I've seen in other recommendations, including the Pipeline Public Alliance, which was a voluntary group that was set up years ago to look at the issue of zoning and pipelines, where 1,000 feet is a good default, but you may have situations where you want to increase that. Because depending on the pressure, depending on the velocity, the size of the pipe, depending on what's going through it, 1,000 feet may not be sufficient. We had a situation with the Bluegrass Pipeline, which was not the one that was proposed for Boral County. It was the other hazardous liquid pipeline project that came and went some years ago after we got a court decision that said they couldn't take people's land because they were not a utility. They had indicated in testimony in front of the State Environmental Quality Commission that there are certain leaks that would occur that they would not be able to detect with their equipment in Houston. And it was a fairly significant volume if it's a low enough leak. So there may be situations, because hazardous liquid, unlike natural gas, which we saw in Lincoln County, can be catastrophic enough, hazardous liquids do not just either evaporate or explode. They evaporate eventually, but they also gather at the surface of the land. They can contaminate groundwater, and they can asphyxiate anyone who comes within their ambit. So with that, what we suggested is you allow the Board of Adjustment in those conditional use processes to possibly condition the use by setting the setback at a higher or a greater distance than 1,000 feet. So this language would simply give them the flexibility based on a case-by-case determination. I had also suggested that for the agricultural zone, Henry had a very good point, which is, right now, the agricultural zone is an of right use. And it is a lower density, and so it's an of right use. I had suggested essentially two changes. One is to provide 1,000-foot minimum setback for any occupied dwelling in the agricultural zone, so that you have an of right use, but it's subject to that standard condition. And that is because I think we all, you know, everybody's goal is the same here, and that is to assure that the use of a linear project like a hazardous liquid pipeline is not going to be inconsistent with the more sensitive uses, residential being probably the most sensitive. And so it would be setting a 1,000-foot default setback for the of right agricultural use from occupied dwellings. And then I had also suggested that you allow that flexibility to increase that. Henry had a very good point, which is, this is an of right use, so you really don't want people to go, have to go in front of the Board of Adjustment. If you want to increase the setback, delegate that to the planning director. And then it will come before you eventually when you have a site plan. So it will be reviewed and ratified, but it would be a matter for the planning director to potentially require an increase in that setback in order to assure compatibility with other land uses and based on case-specific factors like pipeline diameter, pressure, the characteristics of what's in the pipe. Those are the recommendations. I'll let Steve address whether he's comfortable with them. I think if I heard Henry is comfortable with them with that tweak, that I thought was a very good catch on his part. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, I appreciate so much that Boral County, Madison County followed your lead, by the way. They also enacted ordinances addressing the issue of conversion and new hazardous liquid pipelines. And also, one of the eastern Kentucky counties, which has subdivision regulations but not countywide zoning, did the same thing. So in some respects, you all have been really blazing a trail. And I think, as Henry said, it's a trail that is very defensible, and I will be here to defend it, as I was the original ordinance, because I think these changes with these tweaks really build upon what I thought was a good, solid ordinance and make it better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? Henry, you comfortable with what you've heard?
I am.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your brevity and getting right to the point, Mr. Fitzgerald. Appreciate that very much. Anyone else like to comment on this, please? Come to the mic, introduce yourself, and name an address.
You know, I can't help myself. I'm Sarah Volkamp, Danville, Shadland Drive, Danville. And I just want to thank Henry Smith, Tom Fitzgerald, and Steve Hunter for getting together on this, our groups. And we've had a lot of public comments. Our groups are saying, "Let's get on with it." And we appreciate your concern and hope that you will approve these things. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak with regard to the ordinances of, I forgot the numbers, 4, 5, and 7? Yes, ma'am. Go to the mic, introduce yourself, please. Now, this is not limited just to the pipeline, but it's all three ordinances.
Ann Ferguson, 645 Kings Mill Road. 100 pages. I noticed you have yours tabbed. Mine isn't tabbed, and I have not read the whole thing, but I have gone through. Now, on Kings Mill Road, we have a concern on page one, when there is establishment of districts, and there is an agriculture district, AG, page 44. You turn to page two, and you see that AR1, which is how we are zoned right now, changes to AG. Residential is dropped completely from that. We picked this document up in June, and Charles and I have spoken separately to the director about our concerns about being changed from AR1 to AG. The last discussion that we had, Mr. Hunter suggested that after this amendment is approved, our neighborhood could come back and petition the commission to change to RR. When we talked about that with our neighbors, we decided that we needed to bring a petition to you today before you pass this amendment, not after. So, we've worked together with our neighbors. Sunday evening, our neighbor Diane Davis, who drafted our petition, took the first leg of the relay and came back with 11 signatures. Charles and I started again Monday evening and went out, and then Tuesday afternoon also. And we have 10 more signatures of people who live along Kings Mill Road. Our concerns are, and you can look at the use chart, the pipeline's allowed in AG, but it's not allowed in RR. So there we are, a residential community, and we're exempted from protection from the pipeline. If you look also at short-term rentals, they're allowed in AG. In RR, there's a protection. There are supposed to be rules and regulations for short-term rentals. And you have heard me before mention short-term rentals and Airbnbs. So our neighborhood is losing protections by this move from AR1 to AG. We have a petition to give to you all with some 20 signatures of our neighbors who have concerns about that move. And may I say, I do not think that Kings Mill Road is the only road affected by this problem. You need to look at AR1. Wherever you are zoned, AR1, you need to understand that you will be moved to AG, and you will lose certain protections. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address anything with regard to these proposals? Steve, can you address Ann's concerns, please, and that neighborhood's concerns?
Yeah, I can address them. So what she's saying is that the conversion chart, something's changing, and it's really not. The AR1 terminology in the old book says agriculture/residential because, as I pointed out, we created a dual standard. We had setbacks for the five acres plus, and then the one acre plus had different setbacks. But the basic uses that are allowed today in the AR1 are single-family dwelling, farming. And what's allowed in the new ag district is single-family dwelling, farming. Minimum lot size is a tad bit bigger than one acre. Setbacks are actually looser. So it's basically the same district. As I mentioned before, what we don't want to do when we convert these names is you don't want to basically, in a sense, change the basic premise of the district. So we had an agricultural district. So the most intense farming we do in this county is in the agriculture/residential district. Why it was named agriculture/residential, I think the idea was because we're going to allow you to cut off one-acre lots also. So in the theory, you could go out and plot a subdivision of one-acre ag lots on septic tanks and leave it zoned ag. And she's right. We got areas in the community that I'd call residential in nature. Old Bridge is one, her neighborhood, that are clearly agriculture. Some of these aren't even one acre. Some of them, drive down Taylor, Pope Road, we got ag lots all over. Some have internal streets, and clearly, they're not farming them. And we talked about bumping up the ag district to a five-acre district, but we backed off on that. But I think in the conversion, it's a one-to-one conversion. If you could do duplexes, you're still doing duplexes. If you could do highway commercial, you're still doing highway commercial. The ag district is just changing the name from agriculture/residential to agriculture, but the uses are the same as far as residential dwellings and farming. Now, we took some things out of the ag district, like junkyards, dog kennels are now conditional. There was some stuff that surprised me that we could do in the ag district that was out of place. The main issue here is the short-term rentals and the Airbnb. We allowed those to stay, and by the way, that's brand-new verbiage. We allowed those to stay because there's so many bed and breakfasts that were already approved in the ag district, and they're already out there. And they actually are fairly compatible, work well. There's a couple of bad actors, and one's on her street. But we don't want to write the regulations around that. Do they fit out in the ag district? I think bed and breakfasts fit out in the ag district. I think the tourism folks looked at it, support that. Most of the Airbnb and bed and breakfast owners said, "Look, I already got an approval." So not to void out those approvals for bed and breakfasts that have morphed into Airbnbs, we thought they should stay in the ag district. We are prohibiting them in single-family districts because they just don't work. I mean, they're not single-family in nature. It's a hotel, basically. But in the ag district, we're allowing them. We're prohibiting them in some districts, and we're permitting or conditional in others. Now, the problem with this petition, I have no problem with it. What she's asking is that we do what's called a zoning conversion, and I don't mind doing that, but I want to make sure we establish some ground rules. We can't have everybody in the county come in and say, "Hey, I'd like to have a different district, and you guys ought to just change my district." Because what we're not doing here is changing anyone's zoning. We're just re-titling the names, and we have to be careful on that conversion because you can run into problems. So if you go back to the map real quick and just look briefly at the map, just pick an area, there's obviously parts of our community that we should have in something else. And the biggest one is that gold color that we call our GRB. We have a ton of single-family homes in GRB, which is converting to RM2. It currently allows single-family and duplexes. And tomorrow, if this passes, it'll allow single-family and duplexes. I think a lot of those neighbors would ask for the same protection. It's like, "We thought we were a single-family neighborhood." And when that first duplex pops in, it's a problem. But it's a problem today because it was a pyramid ordinance where you could do multiple things. So our GRB was used to get smaller lot sizes and do single-family, but realized tomorrow someone could buy two lots and put a duplex right in the middle of a neighborhood. It happened right on Lexington. We couldn't stop it. So we need to convert a lot of these areas in the community. If that's truly a single-family area, it's better served to get in one of the R1 categories than to leave it GRB. And we don't mind to do these conversions all over the map, but the way that needs to work, and I've done dozens of zoning conversions for that exact reason, little subdivisions out in the county that should be residential, but we need to run it like a zone change. Now, what we can do is, we could waive the survey requirement, we could waive the fees, but they have to take the lead as the applicant and literally fill out an application. Everyone needs to sign, it can convey real property, because in a sense, we are changing zoning. So the way that would work is there'd need to be a signature page where, again, if a husband and wife are on the deed, we need both signatures. Everyone can convey real property. We'd get a master list of how many properties we're going to convert, and we convert them to the proper district, just like a zone change. And the staff would assist with that. What we can't do is convert someone's property who doesn't want to be party to that. So if the gentleman running the Airbnb or the whatever says, "Look, I just assumed stay agriculture," we can't change his property. But the rest of the neighbors, sure, we can change that. Everyone on that strip that's agriculture, and those are small lots out there, by the way, it'd be no problem to convert them to RR or R1. Not a problem. But I think they need to take the lead, file an application. We'd be willing to assist them, waive the survey requirement, waive the fee requirement, run it through like a map amendment as a community or, you know, conversion. And the staff can even support that and file the application as a co-application. But we can only convert people's property that give us permission to convert it. I don't see any other way to do that, and Henry can chime in, but we can only convert those that give us their permission, because we can't change people's zoning without their permission, just like any other map amendment. And we'd be glad to do that for that neighborhood. I'm not sure it'll solve the problem, because I did this around a university once where there was a neighborhood that was tired of college kids moving in, and they wanted to get the single-family definition to play. So they said, "Let's convert everything from duplex to single-family so we can keep the college kids out of the neighborhood." But of course, the guys renting the college kids didn't sign on. So you ended up with this checkerboard effect where we converted a lot of things, single-family, but the guys that were renting the duplexes didn't come on board. So I'm not sure you're going to solve the problem by converting, but we would get it in a proper zoning category. And I think we could do that for just about every bit of that GRB on that map, because most of the town is single-family neighborhoods, yet it's zoned, in a sense, a duplex district. So I think that's all I can say, what we could do and what we're potentially willing to do. That just screws up my work plan there that I gave you guys earlier. There's number eight.
She made the statement about they would not be pipeline prohibited if this occurs. Can you address that?
Yeah, I think what you heard was, is that, and Mr. Fitzgerald alluded to it, we're going to make the pipeline permitted in the ag district. So they are ag. So everywhere in the county is, right now, technically, that's green on this map, potentially could have a pipeline in it, with the rules, though, that we're putting in play. But the beauty of what we just talked about is there's still going to be a conditional use somewhere in that pipeline, and we're still going to be in front of the Board of Adjustments in a linear project of that nature. And the actual situation that we have, the pipeline's there. It's not out there on Kings Mill. So yeah, there's a potential for anything to show up. There could also be, your neighbor could start pig farming tomorrow or start his tractor 11 o'clock at night because it's zoned ag. I mean, that's the reality of living out in the county, living in an ag zone on a septic tank. This is what happens out in the county. Labeling it residential won't fix all of those problems sometimes when you live out in the county, as you guys know. People shoot guns, ride four-wheelers, and act the fool in my neighborhood, too. And luckily, we don't live on a lake where it'd be potentially worse. But I mean, that's part of living out in the ag district. But as far as the pipeline protection, yeah, anyone out in the county, we're saying it's a permitted by right. But we think we've built protections in in the whole hierarchy of the chart that we think we're protecting everyone in the county. So.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this proposed amendment to be passed? The ordinance, excuse me, zoning ordinance. Hearing no one else, we'll consider the public hearing closed. Floor is now open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment, text amendments as proposed in Steve's document of August 28, and include Mr. Griffin's three pages of revisions, and include Tom Fitzgerald's six revisions contained in his letter to us. Also included in my motion is the repeal of present articles 5, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 13, including all amendments to those articles.
Okay. Thank you. Henry, are we good with that motion, you think, sir?
I will submit some specific wording regarding the tweak that Mr. Fitzgerald talked about. It concerns changing where it says the Board of Adjustment can switch the setback to zoning director, and then it'll say, "Subject to the Planning Commission's subsequent approval of a corresponding site plan." That's my tweak. I'll submit that. But I also wanted to add some reasoning for Mr. Boyd's ordinance, or ordinance approval motion, that the amendments will simplify and streamline planning and zoning procedures. The amendments reflect changes in the nature of planning and zoning regulation, development, growth, and preservation in this community. And the amendments will result in a unified, codified text for ease of public use.
Thank you, sir.
If you accept that.
Okay, with that, Jim? Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jim, excuse me. Jeff seconds. Question discussion on the motion has been presented. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you all very much. Any other announcements or any other business for the good for the order? If not, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Wendy makes it. Susie seconds. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.